Good evening, ladies and gentlemen, and welcome to the municipality of Monroeville Citizens Night and Council Work Session. Today's Thursday, March 3rd, 2016. Approximately five after seven, we'd all kindly rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
Before I open up Citizens Night, Councilman Harvey has a announcement, if you will.
Yes, Chief Cole had passed this information on to me and the mayor, and I just wanted to let the public know, and I guess we're going to do it again Tuesday, but I'll read the following. Sergeant Andrew Rusparsky succumbed, was a member of the Monroeville Police Department, and succumbed to injuries sustained on August 29th, 1954, when he was struck by a vehicle at the intersection of William Penn Highway and Center Road. He and another officer were directing traffic at the intersection when he was struck and thrown over 200 feet. He suffered a fractured skull, broken shoulder, and a broken leg that eventually had to be amputated. He underwent over 50 surgeries following the crash as health, his health continued to deteriorate. He died as a result of complications on October 29th, 1968. Sergeant Rusparsky was a U.S. Army Veteran of World War II and had been with the Monroeville Borough Police Department for 17 years.
And if I can, Ron, due to some work of some very fine people, on May 13th, 2016, his name will be added to the National Fallen Law Enforcement Officer Memorial in Washington, DC. Finally, considered a line of duty death. The inscription will read, Sergeant Andrew Robert Rusparsky, Monroeville Police Department, EOW, end of watch, if you will, October 29th, 1968, will take place on May 13th, when it is unveiled. He will be located on the 59th Line, East 29th Block. So, it's, I'm just very pleased that they recognized that this, the, this officer, one of our own, if you will, due to his injuries, they did recognize that this was in the line of duty, so, I just, to the folks that did all this work, I know, I appreciate that. Now, we'll open it up for Citizens Night, and Tim, you want to grab the list?
Yeah.
Okay, thanks, Bob.
Come on, George.
Is there any other others on there, George?
For me?
On the other sheet, too?
No, sir.
Frank DiMatteo, if you will, please. If you'll state your name for the record, and that you're a resident of Monroeville, you do not have to give your address.
Oh, yeah, I was a resident of Monroeville for 35 years, and my name is Frank DiMatteo, and I just wanted to address a little something that the, that the council addressed a few weeks ago. I wanted to real quickly, just take about two minutes. The First Amendment, "Congress shall make no law respecting an establishment of religion or prohibiting the free exercise thereof, or abridging the freedom of speech, or of the press, or of the right of the people peaceably to assemble and to petition the government for redress of grievances." And nowhere in, in there does it forbid prayer. In fact, just the opposite, it allows freedom of religion, not freedom from religion, religion. We found a, a judgment that was rendered from the United States Supreme Court on May 5th of 2014. The statement was with the town of Greece versus Galloway. Supreme Court agreed to hear a case regarding whether prayers of a town meetings, which are allowed, must be allow, allow various faiths to lead prayer, or whether the prayers can be predominantly Christian. On May 5th, the U.S. Supreme Court of Greece versus Galloway said the U.S. Construction does not allow for prayer or government meetings, it doesn't, it doesn't prevent prayer, but it also, it allows for sectarian prayers, like predominantly, they can be predominantly Christian, or any other religion. A moment of silence does not seem to invite the presence of, of a higher power, or the wisdom of help, or help that we all want to have. Sometimes it just seems that we get threatened by something, and immediately we are in fear and so on, and therefore the tail wags the dog. If we allow one person to change something that all of us maybe, may, may disagree with, then what we've allowed is we've allowed a dictatorship. The ACLU wants to start a lawsuit, I understand. Well, we have the ACLJ, which will defend us in this lawsuit, if you're interested. I just have faith in this body, that they'll do the right thing, and really keep the rights for all of our, and the liberties for all of our children, and all future generations. I really would appreciate it if you guys would reconsider the decision that was made. I feel a little bit hastily, so, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. John Ritter, please state your name for the record.
Hi, guys, I'm John Ritter, resident of Monroeville. I'm here on behalf of the, the national motto effort that's going on right now in the United States. Just have a few items I'd like to bring forward to our attention. So, the U.S. House voted overwhelmingly 396 to 9 in November of 2011 via concurrent resolution that Congress affirms, "In God We Trust" is our national motto, and supports the encouragement of the public display of the national motto in all public buildings, public schools, and other government institutions, and for the overhead camera. Here's a copy of that, sorry about that. Resolution by Congress.
Just so you know, John, I just met one of the folks that are deeply involved in that, and when I was in Harrisburg on Monday, so I'll be talking with them.
Very good. Okay, so, we've got the Congress of the United States saying the national motto is, is something that should be supported. So, on July 30th, 2016, we have the 60th anniversary coming up, and I did a little head scratching, and I figured that that was about three weeks after the 4th of July. Monroeville usually has some sort of a parade, where some of the citizens and the neighbors get together, and they celebrate our independence. And I was thinking, what could we do here in Monroeville and surrounding communities to help celebrate the national motto's 60th anniversary? And I was thinking, just off the top of my head, we could have the national anthem, which contains the phrase, "In God We Trust," as part of, one of the verses, we could have the kids or somebody sing that as part of the parade, we could put stickers, we could hand out little tokens to the kids, "In God We Trust" is our national motto, pennies, they have "In God We Trust" written on them. We could have the veterans, you know, hold up some sort of a, an emblem that says, "We're the veterans, and God, we do trust, we've laid our lives down for this country." In fact, I was reading the, the Monroeville Veterans Memorial Statement outside here, that's posted, it says, "Dedicated by a grateful community to the men and women of Monroeville who gave their lives in armed forces service to preserve our freedoms and the American way of life." Well, one of those freedoms is to be a nation in whom we trust in God. We don't have a dictator over us. This might be a good time for us to step forward this summer and say, "Thank you very much, Lord, and thanks to the folks who have laid their lives down to give us this government, one nation under God." We all take those oaths when we serve. This is a way we can do that. So, we could also encourage the, the local businesses, the chambers of commerce, or councils, to put big emblems on their, you know, parade fixings as they go by, maybe the fire trucks or something like that, to make a big deal of it, to let the folks in the, in the surrounding area know, we are a community.
John, I'm not gonna, I agree with you, what you're saying. The bottom line is, I'm going to be meeting with this gentleman. Again, I just met him Monday. I told him I will probably get together the next week or so, so, he's gonna have a lot of ideas for us to consider, so.
Very good. Also, there's a, a national movement that we could tie into, that have some other pretty good ideas that we could take advantage of, in order to help this momentum along. There's an "In God We Trust" flyer that's already been produced.
Correct.
And as our friend Frank just said a minute ago, I did make a, a YouTube video about the prayer ordinance, and I've got that laid out right here. I forgot to mention it last time I was up, but that YouTube video for the folks at home who would like to play it, it's a three and a half minute video. If you go ahead and Google "prayer ordinance Ritter," it'll pop right up. You could play it, you can see where Frank and some of the other folks in the community are coming from. This is what, last time I was here, I was asking the council to please find a way to get some feedback from the community. I was wondering, has anyone in the community offered feedback on this issue yet?
Oh, yeah, I've gotten, folks talk to me all the time about it, so.
Okay, so, our hearts are with you. We're not against you. We're not against you. We, we're a community who struggles to find a way to serve God this short time that we're on earth, and we hope His hand of blessing is on us, and our schools, and our businesses, and our veterans, and our policemen, our farmen. And so, that's why we're so passionate about this. And of course, we know that it offends some people, those are the people that we love, that we lay our lives down for, so they have no reason to be afraid of us. Okay? So, thanks very kindly for your attention again, folks.
Thank you, John.
Thank you.
Carmen and Bambi Pascuzzi, I hope I'm saying your name right?
Correct.
Just state your name for the record, that you live in Monroeville, you don't have to give your address.
Carmen Pascuzzi, resident of Monroeville.
Bambi Pascuzzi.
Your turn.
All right, thank you. I hope this is the right meeting to bring this up, but in front of our house, we, about 20 years ago, or some years ago, we, somebody brought us from Monroeville to sign over the first 10 feet of our property, that's right on Tilbrook Road, and, you know, we signed it, and we're just a little bit concerned, because in front, the asphalt is really dipping and lifting up. And, you know, if anybody would possibly get hurt, you know, cars pull over there all the time, turning around, right across from Monroeville Park, mailman, even my family, we pull up there sometimes, and we're just a little bit concerned that if somebody would get hurt, try to sue, that it would come back and, to possibly Monroeville Borough, because we signed over that first 10 feet.
I've been over there for it myself. George, is this the same property we're talking?
Yeah.
And George asked me, and I went over, and I actually took a couple pictures of it. On my phone, and I went to Mr. Hugus with those pictures, and we didn't get, I don't know where we went from there.
We were looking for the agreement the gentleman speaks about. We don't have any record of it. I spoke with George last time, and asked if somebody could produce the record, and that's where we're at with it.
How long ago was that?
Well, we moved in 21 years ago, and they sent us repeated letters telling us we needed to sign this over.
The municipality.
Yes, and...
I mean, if it's an issue with the road, why don't we?
It's, it's the right of way. It's, it's an asphalt area off the edge of the road.
Off the edge of the road. Like a pull-off or a park?
Yes, exactly.
Exactly right.
But they did force us to eventually sign it over, and we did.
You don't have a copy of what you signed?
We're looking for it.
Hopefully, we do. You're looking for it?
We're trying, but we think it's in our basement and got damaged.
Is it a big deal?
Oh, okay. I'm just kind of taken back, because that being my ward, I've never been contacted by anybody to know that you had an issue there. This is the first I'm hearing of it.
Linda, I just had to be talking to George one day, and he said, "If you're out and about, could you, it's a friend, where, could you look?" And I just, for no reason, I was over that way, and I got out, and I, wow, and I went click, click, and I took a couple pictures of the sound of Paul. And it's, it's like a pull-off.
I, I just kind of wish I had been notified, so I kind of knew what was going, I'm taken back a little bit, that I haven't been involved, and I apologize, but I didn't know anything.
Yes.
Come over and take a look.
Come over and take a look, it's pretty bad. But we definitely signed the papers. We waited a couple years, I believe, before we signed them, though.
Especially with the weather, you know, with the freezing and falling. I mean, it's really lifting up, and there's a real...
Who initially asphalted it? I mean, who asphalted it?
We have no idea.
Yeah, that's, we have no idea.
So, it's not the street itself, it's not Tilbrook itself, it's your...
Well, they, I don't know if it's our property, because we signed over the right of way, they, they said it was theirs, and if anything happened, they'd be responsible, if we didn't sign over these, the right of way, that we'd be responsible. So, we definitely signed it over after, like, so many attempts from the boroughs, at first we didn't want to, and then finally we did.
Okay. And Paul, where does this stand? Sorry, I'm trying to get caught up here.
Well, it's, it's kind of interesting, because I don't think it's their property, no offense to them, because that area is part of the municipal right of way.
Okay.
So, I don't know why they would have to sign it over, because it's part of the right of way.
Well, maybe, because it's so long ago, maybe that's what they did then, I don't know, but...
You know, it's part of the municipal right of way. I don't know who initially put the asphalt in.
Yeah, we don't know.
It's...
So, we're gonna have Public Works go over? Yeah, why is Public Works not going over and fixing it?
It's an accident waiting to happen, and a lawsuit waiting to happen.
And it's not that big of a stretch either, just, it's the front of your property.
If you, the easiest way to explain it, if you visualize a house, it, like, how could I say, if you get down, drive in Turnpike Gardens, use Smitty's house, there's a 10-foot wide section that had asphalt, he parks in front of his house, right off the street, and that's exactly what this is, only it's all sunken in big time.
I mean, let me just say this, you see a lot of these all over the municipality.
Yes, you do.
And when we pave a street, we don't pave those areas. They're usually, the resident puts them in, and they usually take care of them. It's something that we don't typically do, because we'd spend most of our asphalt money on paving these asphalt pads in front of their houses. So, it's, it's, it's sort of something out of the normal.
Can we have Public Works go and look at, look at it, please?
I'm sorry?
Can we have Public Works go over and look at it?
Yeah, I mean, I've seen it.
So...
I mean, and it's an area that needs to be repaired.
And you are saying, are you saying definitely, then, it is the municipality's responsibility, and not the homeowner's?
It's, it's in the municipal right of way, is what I'm telling you.
Which makes it the municipalities.
Not necessarily. I mean, again, you see pull-off areas in front of houses all the time.
Yeah.
Lot of those were constructed by the homeowners.
Right.
Not by the municipality, so therefore, we don't maintain them. They're saying they signed a document. I can't find a document, so...
And the municipality sure uses it, too.
Is there a safety issue?
Say that again?
The municipality sure uses it, too.
Well, let's fix it.
Just fix the damn thing.
Keep in mind, the first, usually the right of way on a municipal road's 50 feet, road's usually 26, 28 feet wide. The first 12 feet of everybody's property in this room that lives in Monroeville is right of way. So, every single driveway in Monroeville, first 10 or 12 feet is within the right of way. So, like Paul's saying, if you fix one, essentially, you're gonna commit yourself to fixing everyone. Every driveway in Monroeville.
But this isn't our driveway. We have a separate driveway that parks seven cars, this isn't our driveway.
Yeah, we have a separate driveway.
It's the same, gone, except that you can't really extricate one issue from the other.
Counsel, what do you want to do? Let's forget about the talking. Counsel, what do you want to do?
If you find the papers, then I think that, that...
Let's let Public Works take a look at it, and see what kind of issue it is. Make a recommendation.
Public Works, look at it, make a recommendation.
I would like that, I would like to ask the Public Works, take a look at it, make a recommendation to us, and then go from there. And in the meantime, can you just, I hate to ask you to continue to look, but I'm sure you want to find it more than we want you to find it.
Oh, yes.
So, let's try and at least get moving.
Tim will get back to you, we have your number and your address, so, Tim will contact you once Public Works goes down and takes a look at it, makes some recommendations. But I'm still saying, and I hear what you're saying.
And I'll give you an example, Mr. George just said, with, with Smitty's asphalt area, when we paved West Patty Lane, we didn't pave that.
I know, Paul, I understand what you're saying, like, my father put a cement pad in his side yard to park a vehicle on. You know, he maintains that, it's not the boroughs, but, you know, they're saying this is not for their parking, they didn't add this for their parking, so...
In fact, the letter had first stated that the former owner had never done it, and they were supposed to do it, so we finally signed it over.
Okay.
So, what was, was there asphalt there whenever you moved in?
Yes.
So, you haven't touched it?
No.
And they didn't, and they never, Public Works never repaved it since you've been owners?
They like to park their trucks on it, though.
Okay, that, is that what you mean? That's what I was gonna ask you, is that what you mean by they certainly don't mind using it?
Oh, yeah. It's bad.
It's an issue. Turning around at the park and stuff, you know, when people pass it, you know.
Well, let's, let's see what Public Works has to say.
Yeah, let's, let's, let's at least start the process.
We can't make any promises at this point, but at least let Public Works take a look. Is that fair, counsel?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Robert Sarafini, come on down.
Okay, sir. My name is Robert Sarafini, I've been a resident of Monroeville for 30 years. Something a little different here tonight, guys. On November 19th, 2015, I had the privilege of meeting and talking briefly with Beatrice Morrison, a remarkable lady. I mention this tonight because she has been a resident of Monroeville for 74 years, and is going to celebrate her 100th birthday this month. I would like very much to wish Beatrice a healthy and very happy birthday. That's all.
Happy birthday, Beatrice.
Happy birthday.
Yeah.
It's fantastic.
George Lapsovich.
You want us to sing?
Uh, no, you can't sing.
Let's not ruin her birthday.
Yeah.
No.
That's amazing. Good evening, counsel. About a year ago, a little...
Who are you, sir?
Pardon me?
Who are you?
George Lapsovich, Monroeville, Pennsylvania.
Very good.
I'm sorry. About a year, over, a little over a year ago, there was an incident on Monroeville Boulevard with a police cruiser and a pedestrian, a pedestrian got hurt, I mean, killed. I was in front of a car the other night, which, same thing could have happened if the driver wasn't paying attention with his, people wearing black, and I still haven't seen a street light put up, which they said, you said, they were gonna put up in that area. I just wonder, when the street light's gonna be put up?
I thought we did add one.
No.
There was one put up.
I thought there was.
I'm pretty sure.
I thought there was.
I'm pretty sure there was, it might not be put in the right place, but I do recall a light being...
The area I...
No, it's still dark there.
The area I was...
I know it's still dark on Monday night.
The area I was thinking about, you know, where Rudy Subs are?
Yeah.
That's where this pedestrian must've got hit.
On this backside, down here, George.
Yes, ma'am.
Right, on the right-hand side.
Yes, ma'am.
Yes.
It's still dark.
Right.
But I know they put a light there somewhere.
They did.
You know, if it wasn't for this driver last night, he, he would've hit this person.
I'm thinking that when the hotel goes in, that the added light from the hotel is going to also illuminate on the street, because you, I, I know that I was contacted and asked, when the business had shut down that was there, could we not make them keep their lights on? And we, of course, couldn't do that to help illuminate the streeting. But I'm thinking, once the hotel goes in, their, their lighting is also going to help illuminate that area.
But I was very concerned about that pedestrian the other night.
And I can understand that, because leaving here, it's happened, I've seen that, in my own vehicle, with people in all black clothing, running across that street.
In census, is, we think there was, and maybe not in the location that we originally wanted it.
That's what I said, it's, it was one there, but maybe not exactly where it was put. I do remember.
So, we can verify that?
We will look at it.
There we go.
I appreciate it.
Thank you, George.
A light was put in, we just don't know if it was put in where we wanted it.
See, and, you know, I drive that a lot, and I don't think there's ever a light put in that area.
Jamie thinks that LED lights would help, too, there.
I, that's what I'm saying, put a different kind of bulb in there.
That light is very downstairs.
It is. It is.
Yeah, put a light in.
I know.
Okay, once again, ladies and gentlemen, I'll keep the floor open for anybody who'd like to address Council. It is certainly your time to do so. And we'll close that proportion of the meeting. And before we get started, Council conducted an executive session for personnel mitigation reasons before tonight's Citizens Night Meeting, beginning at 5:45 PM until about 6:55 PM. Council legislative action, if any, shall be taken at the March 8th, 2016 Regular Council Meeting. Council, if you'll take a look at the...
Mayor?
Yes.
Can we have the gentleman from the Human Needs and Resource Board give us a kind of a little bit of explanation on the Live Well Allegheny campaign?
Sure. I thought it was gonna be for Tuesday. You wanna do that for me?
No, he's here this evening, so that way the Council can understand.
I apologize. I didn't even realize you weren't paying attention. Sign in if you would, sir.
I was gonna come up as part of the public comment on proposed items thing. My name is Daniel Marston. I'm a resident of Monroeville, and I'm here talking on behalf of the Human Needs and Resources Board on the proposed agenda for a regular council meeting. You have as the first item there. It says Live Well Allegheny Campaign. What we are, and I think in your packet, you have a copy of the resolution that we're asking about.
Yes.
And I just wanted to come and give an explanation and answer any questions that you might have. What happened is you might remember is last year, we came to Council and, or I came to Council and talked about doing a survey, which we were using to identify what sorts of things we as a board needed to address. And we did the survey, took in the results, and have been using those ever since. What we were looking for, after we had the survey results, was some sort of structured way of approaching some of the issues that came up. And this Live Well Allegheny Campaign seems to fit right in. There were several items on the survey that came up as main concerns of residents, or major concerns with residents. And we've incorporated those as part of this resolution. Three of those were access to food, understanding of transportation options, and information about activities for children and teenagers. Those were three major items that come, came up as, from the survey. And the Live Well Allegheny Campaign is a campaign that was put together by Allegheny County Executive Rich Fitzgerald that allows communities the opportunity to address issues that are important for keeping wellness in a community, for helping the residents live healthy lives, and have access to the things that they need for healthy lives. So we thought this fit right in, that as, if we joined up with this Live Well Allegheny Campaign, it would allow us some structured resources to help meet some of the needs that the residents brought up. We also, as a board, thought it was a good idea because it's a way of sort of connecting with other communities who are trying to address some of the same issues we are. And so what we're asking you to do is allow us to connect with this Live Well Allegheny Community, and to do that, we would need to have this resolution passed. So I did, that's just sort of a brief summary of what this is all about, and I thought I'd come up and answer any questions that you might have about it.
Any questions, Council?
Well, just so the rest of the Council knows, I did forward this onto Attorney Ratcher's office, and he just made one tiny little change in a one-sentence wording, and then approved that it was okay. And then the manager has also already seen this. So I took those steps, too, before they were put into our packets, to make sure that it fit the criteria necessary.
Looks like you're good to go.
Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Alrighty, Council, let's go on to our minutes of the Citizens Night Meeting of February 4th, 2016, the Council Work Session of February 4th, 2016, and the Regular Council Meeting of February 9th, 2016. Any additions or corrections? Seeing none, we'll move over to our tax collections. Once again, Council, any additions or corrections? Or any questions? We do have Mr. Folkerson here.
Yes, sir.
Alrighty, move over to payroll report. Once again, any questions or corrections or additions? And moving over to our list of bills and budget transfers, and Linda, we'll start off with you.
Nothing, Mayor, thank you.
Nick?
No questions, Mayor.
Ron?
Nothing.
Jim?
Nothing, sir.
Paul?
Nothing, sir.
Steve?
Nothing.
And Tom?
No, thank you.
Very good. And we'll move over to our resolutions or consent agenda, and Tim, if you would.
Okay, the first resolution for this Tuesday's Council Meeting is a resolution authorizing the distribution of grant funds for the Memorial Day Parade in the amount of $3,200.
If you remember last year, Council, we ate $5,000. I didn't know where you were at, if you would.
Excuse me, for what it's worth, Bob Gibson, who we all know took care of the Memorial Day Parade, passed away.
Correct.
I spoke to, and the only reason I spoke to him, his name is Reed, and I apologize, I forget your last name, Reed. He's forming a committee. He's the commander down there now.
Correct.
I talked to him. He's forming a committee to take care of the parade, and if we issue these funds, I'm on the board with Sean Logan, Convention and Visitors, they're also gonna give him, them, $1,000. So they'll have $4,200 to do what they do, I guess. And I told him, once we got it, I would see that they got it. And thanks to Mr. Sedlec, I got all the paperwork, the permits and insurance and what we need to make it work.
Mayor, can we increase our grant funds to $4,000, and it'll come out to 5,000 with...
I would prefer that. I mean, that's your call, Council.
Yeah, I don't know where the $3,200 came from, I have.
That's what we were given.
I don't either.
Oh, I'm sorry.
And then last year, we jumped it up.
That's what I thought.
We're still saving $1,000.
It's up to you, Council. I think it's worth giving the extra.
You're saying bumping up $800, make our...
Yeah, make it even 4,000 and then let the...
Then the convention bureau does 1,000, and they would end up with the 5.
Exactly right.
Because you gotta remember, their prices go up every year, so...
Well, it's $100, so...
I'm okay with that, if you're, can take a poll.
Tim, if you would.
Okay, second resolution is a resolution authorizing the distribution of grant funds for the Monroeville Independence Festivities in the amount of $10,000. And this is annually done for the fireworks.
And Jim, if you would, say it again.
Yeah, I'm, I also was on the board, am on the board. Sean Logan and the Convention and Visitors Bureau also give us, the community, $10,000, which comes out, we have $20,000 to spend. The fireworks display, I don't quote me on it, but I believe it's close to $17,000. And then the remaining monies are to get all the groups that we do to come into the parade.
Questions or comments, Council? Jim, if you would.
Okay, the third resolution is a resolution authorizing the funding match for a multi-municipal comprehensive plan grant from the Allegheny County Economic Development Department for the updated municipality Monroeville Comprehensive Plan with the Township of Wilkins and the Borough of Churchill. If Council remembers, we passed a resolution last month to enter into this grant, and this is for the allocation of the $50,000 among the three municipalities, and our share would be $37,500. And this is based on population. Wilkins would be 8,500, and Borough of Churchill would be 4,000.
Questions or comments, Council? Bob, if you would, thanks, Tim. Ordinances.
This is an ordinance, amending ordinance 1512 and authorizing the Monroeville Foundation Inc. to offer naming opportunities for facilities in the community park via application subject to final approval by municipal council. And this was tabled last month at the regular meeting.
Correct. It's to be tabled again, too, on Tuesday. We have to, there's gonna be a discussion at the Park and Recreation Board on this coming Monday.
Bob, if you would.
Next, we have an ordinance to enter into an agreement with other member municipalities of the Turtle Creek Valley Council of Governments for the establishment of a Property Maintenance Code Joint Board of Appeals as required by the International Property Maintenance Code, and hereby dissolving the Monroeville Property Maintenance Code Board of Appeals.
Questions or comments, Council? You know, we've been discussing this quite a while, so...
No questions, thank you.
Alrighty. Thanks, Bob. And we'll move over to our municipal staff reports, and Bob, any?
I have one item for the Council's consideration, Mayor. Due to the mediation last week with Chief Cole and his lawsuit with the municipality, there's a proposal on the table to resolve that lawsuit, and something should be placed on the agenda for Council's action on that proposal on Tuesday.
Council, we good?
Yes.
Alrighty, Tim, if you would.
Sure.
Anything else for us, Bob?
Nothing, thanks.
All right, Tim, you're up.
Okay, I have three items here. Next month's agenda-setting meeting will not be on a Thursday, it will be on a Wednesday. We did this last year. It'll be on April the 6th instead of April the 7th due to Council, I don't know if all Council members are going to the Allegheny League of Municipalities Annual Conference at Seven Springs. And that begins on Thursday, and Council and myself usually attend that conference.
We'll put it on our Channel 15, and our website.
Are we changing the meaning?
Correct. Okay. Item number two, at last month's meeting, as everybody knows, we appointed Attorney Bob Ratcher here as our, as our new solicitor. And I believe Mr. Duncan mentioned about the fees, that we should let the public know about the fees. And the mayor mentioned that we would deal with that forthcoming. Well, this is forthcoming. So I'm requesting Council, or I'm asking Council, for me to place a motion at the meeting this coming Tuesday. Mr. Ratcher's fees are $15,000 a month, plus anything over 10 hours with respect to litigation would be $150 per hour. So I'm looking for, if Council's okay, will that put that on as a motion for Tuesday's Council Meeting?
Motion to approve?
No, no, no. Just put it on the agenda.
I mean, it was already voted on, so...
Well, this is the fee part.
Everybody good for putting it on for Tuesday?
Yes.
All right. Next, Tim.
Okay, the last item is, two hires have been made. For the past year, we have been looking for a mechanic foreman to fill a position that was vacated approximately five years ago. And I have hired and mentioned it to Council, and I'm mentioning it to the public, Mr. Bill DeAndrus, who has his own mechanic shop. He will be the new mechanic foreman for the municipality of Monroeville, beginning this Monday, I believe. No, excuse me, the following Monday, the 14th, he will begin. And also, we'll be hiring a position that we've been looking to fill since May, which is the zoning officer, community planner position. And that would be Mr. Jason Straley. Mr. Straley has 15 years' experience of heading up a department of this sort. And both of the people, Mr. DeAndrus and Mr. Straley, I informed them to come to the Council Meeting on Tuesday to introduce themselves to the Council and the public.
When does he start?
He starts next Wednesday.
Next Wednesday. Thank you, sir. Paul, you're up.
I do. I have three items. There's two, but I do have three. The first item is a follow-up from last month's meeting about streetlights. We had sort of given you an overview of what we need to do with the streetlight program. And we sort of concentrated on how we do this within neighborhoods because of the lights, do we want to remove lights, sad lights, the brightness of the lights. Here's option two, is instead of going into the neighborhoods, do the main lines.
I'm in.
Center Road, William Penn, Duff Road, 48, 48, 22, Monroeville Boulevard. Do those, and then we could figure out what we're gonna do in the neighborhoods.
I like that idea.
I love the idea.
And then we could figure it out as we go.
Yes.
I think it's one of...
Good idea.
Why take that long to figure that out?
What was so tough about it?
Pat yourself on the back, Jim.
Questions?
I think you get the approval to do that, Paul.
The second item, well, we'll skip number two, and we're gonna go to number three. Last month, we also talked about the traffic signals from Cochrane-Pawniak. On Route 22, from Cochrane-Pawniak to the Murrayville Line, we put in some new technology. After a few bugs were worked out, it seems to be working much more efficiently. We've got all positive reactions. Just didn't know if you had heard anything?
Can I comment on that?
Absolutely. As long as it's good.
Yeah, it's positive, yes. My wife and I had to go to the vets two weeks ago, and right after the lights were installed. And the vet is out by the Cozy Inn in Export. And on our return home, I live on Evergreen Drive, and it took us 10 minutes. We didn't hit one red light, and we didn't go over the speed limit, I don't think. And it just took us 10 minutes from their driveway to my driveway. It was amazing.
Nice.
It was just...
Flowed very smoothly. I've got some good feedback, too, to mention.
I was gonna call you today, but unfortunately, I got busy doing everything else.
And I don't think anybody goes up and down that hill more than I do. And...
We agree.
Twice today, I was having to be down there, and some residents, or they see my Jeep, and right away, it was just ironic. It's been working perfectly, it has been. There must be a bug there somewhere today. Because right at the gas station, and the air, the traffic's backed the whole way. I mean, it lights green over here, and it's red over here, and it was a total cluster. It happened two different times.
Okay.
I'm sure it's just a bug in the system. Because it's been working fine.
The location of Alpine and Northern Pike together is very difficult because of the geometry and the short distance.
I understand that, believe me, I really do.
But...
But it's been fine.
Okay, good. The last thing is, Jamie's here tonight to give his annual MS4 public presentation that we have to do under our MS4 rules and regulations. So it's going to be short and sweet.
Jamie, you don't have it up yet.
You got it now?
That's a problem.
Oh, wait a minute, wait a minute.
You're a little ahead of us, Joe.
There we go.
There we are.
Sorry. I got messed up my fingers.
That was my fault. Alright, so I'm going to try to keep it short and sweet here. I'm always the long-winded doom and gloom guy, but we have a little PowerPoint presentation, and we're going to talk about stormwater management and MS4. I'm going to go quick. If you have questions at the end, let me know. So the purpose is to talk about what does stormwater management entail, and what are our MS4 obligations? And then we're going to talk about what are the costs associated with stormwater management and the MS4 obligations. So, first question is, what storm sewer infrastructure do we have? What is stormwater detention and treatment, and what are our MS4 requirements? As far as storm sewer infrastructure, once again, what storm sewer infrastructure do we have? What is the general condition, and what do we need for future maintenance?
You know what, let me interrupt you. Maybe you want to just briefly tell some of the folks what MS4 is.
Yeah.
It's on the slide.
I'll put it on the slide, I'm sorry.
It stands for Municipal Separate Storm Sewer System.
Relax.
Yeah, we'll get to it.
Okay.
So what do we have as far as storm sewer infrastructure goes? Of the municipality-owned facilities in Monroeville, we've got almost 3,700 storm pipes, which is 68 miles of pipe, over 3,000 storm inlets, over 300 storm manholes, 700 headwalls and outfalls, 34 detention facilities with an estimated value of $38 million, or $36 million. I'm looking across.
Is it...
Thank you.
Thirty-six.
What is the general condition? Most of the infrastructure was constructed when Monroeville was built out, which is roughly 1950 to 1980. So we're talking about 35 to 65 years old. Much of the pipe is corrugated metal, which has a 25-year lifespan under good conditions. Mine drainage is not good conditions, but it's something normal that our pipes have to deal with. So on average, most of our pipes are 25 years past their anticipated lifespan. And there's a picture of what we commonly see. On the left side is a metal pipe that the bottom has rusted away from exposure to water. And on the right side is what happens after that occurs for a while, and the pipe finally fails. Another large portion of our pipe is made of clay. It's prone to damage by roots. It's strong but fragile. It's prone to cracking like a flower pot, which leads to collapse. And cleaning and root removal often destroys the fragile pipe. There are some pictures of what clay pipe looks like, some pictures of roots, and some pictures of the cracking you get from it. Most of the inlets and manholes are brick. They're prone to damage by water, frost action, salt-laden winter runoff. And again, most are 35 to 65 years old. And there are some pictures of what we commonly see out in the field, the condition deterioration. As far as detention ponds and tanks, they're up to 30 years old. Most of them are somewhat overgrown. They have accumulated sediment. They're deteriorating, and they have poor access through private properties. As far as future maintenance needs, there's a need to enhance staffing and equipment to become proactive, to begin routine televising to assess the condition. And that would require closed-circuit TV equipment for public works. Cleaning, where the TV finds a need, which would require a vector for public works. And it would allow us to find and correct issues before failures or flooding occur. So the intent would be to proactively plan and manage the system, the budget for required equipment, materials, and projects, and move towards more cost-effective, less disruptive trenchless repairs where appropriate. So in that case, we wouldn't have to dig things up. And we want to fix issues before they cause damage or grow into more costly projects. So now we're going to talk about stormwater management and treatment. We're going to talk about what is impervious area, what is stormwater detention, and what is water quality treatment and BMPs. So impervious areas are hardscapes like driveways, parking lots, roofs, sidewalks, et cetera. Impervious areas do not allow rainwater to enter the ground. And consequently, most of the rainwater runs off the storm sewers and streams where it causes erosion and flooding. Here's a nice image. On the left is a natural area with trees and grass. Only about 10% of the water that lands on that surface runs off. On the right side is an urban setting. Obviously, there's parking lots and trees, or parking lots and roofs and that sort of thing. So about 55% of the water that lands on that ends up becoming runoff. So the concept of stormwater detention is to control runoff to prevent flooding. The runoff rate after development is not allowed to increase. In most cases, in Monroeville, we require an actual reduction. And we use ponds and tanks to temporarily store the excess runoff. So stormwater detention kind of functions just like a bathtub. When the spigot's running full, the drain is too slow, and the tub fills up. When the spigot, which in this case would be rain, is turned off, the tub drains slowly. And ponds have a spillway like the overflow in your tub in case it gets too full. And here's a picture of a new stormwater detention pond at the Grace Baptist Church over by Turnpike Gardens. And here are three pictures of different underground detention tanks. These are all at private development sites in Monroeville.
If anybody's driven by the old subway down the street here where they're building the Holiday Inn Express, you'll see the large diameter pipes are laying there. Those now are in the ground, which is part of their stormwater management facility.
Alright, so we're going to talk about stormwater quality. There's various best management practices, what they call BMPs. Everything needs to have an acronym. The goal is to clean, cool, and slow the runoff. The secondary benefit is infiltration to reduce the volume of runoff. That's a newer concept that stems from the MS4 requirements. And here's a picture of a BMP. This is a rain garden at Sheets, the new Sheets at 22 and Elliott. The water runs off the parking lot, goes into a soil area where it can soak into the soil, and then it ends up in the stormwater collection system. So on to MS4 requirements. What is MS4? Somebody asked the question earlier.
Mr. Mayor.
So that stands for Municipal Separate Storm Sewer Systems. So you get one M, four S's, you get MS4. Where did it come from? The Federal Clean Water Act of 1972 is where it started. That created the National Pollutant Discharge Elimination System, NPDES. Phase 2 applied to us in 2003, and it requires us to have a permit to discharge stormwater. The purpose of the MS4 requirements is to reduce or eliminate flooding and to improve water quality. The MS4 requirements have six minimum control measures, MCMS. Once again, everything's an acronym. Public education and outreach, public involvement and participation, illicit discharge detection and elimination, construction site stormwater runoff control, post-construction stormwater management, and pollution prevention and municipal operations, good housekeeping. So this is really the focus of this presentation, is the MS4 requirements and what are we doing as a municipality to satisfy those MCMS? With respect to public education and outreach, we have a revamped municipal website. We have a dedicated page for stormwater, and that's www-monroeville PA.us/stormwater.html. If you go on the main page, there's a pull-down menu there, I think, for residents that has a link straight to it. You'll see an insert in your March Monroeville Municipal Authority Water and Sewer Bill. It has a lot of information about preventing pollution and how to reduce runoff. One of the things we take advantage of is the television broadcast of this meeting on TV-15. A lot of communities don't have access to that. And TV-15 airs Greenworks TV programs on occasion that also cover environmental topics. With respect to public involvement, we have this presentation conducted at a public meeting. Coming up next month is the Jack Sedlack Cleanup Day on April 23rd, 2016. Let me check my date there. We have an opportunity for storm drain stenciling and storm drain markers. This is something that we've had Eagle Scouts do before. There's little placards that they can epoxy next to an inlet that says, "Don't dump into the inlet, it drains to a stream." There's also stencils that do the same thing. So if anybody's interested in that opportunity, that's available. We have an Adopt a Road program, where you can adopt a portion of... Usually, it's like an uninhabited road in Monroeville where there's not too many houses, and you can volunteer to keep that clean like you see on some of the state roads. And one of the other things we're required to do is provide public notice if we have ordinance changes, which we don't have right now. With respect to illicit discharge elimination, we're performing enhanced mapping of our storm sewer system. We conduct outfall screening and testing. That's where the pipes actually flow out into streams or over hillsides. We remove and correct illicit discharges. We have the public education insert in the March Water Bill that we already spoke of. And we have two new complaint hotlines. One is by telephone, 412-856-3330 is a stormwater pollution hotline. If you see somebody dumping antifreeze in a storm drain, or you see some funny colored water coming out of a pipe, call us, we'll look into it. And we also have an email address that you can do the same thing. That's SWpollution@monroeville PA US. These are both also on the website if you need to access that. With respect to construction site runoff, we have routine unannounced inspections by staff. We coordinate with the Allegheny County Conservation District. And once again, we have the complaint hotlines. If you see something egregious happening at a construction site, call the hotline, we'll look into it. Post-construction stormwater management. We require stormwater management and BMPs for new developments by ordinance. We perform inspections and tracking. We maintain the BMP facility inventory, and we perform ongoing re-inspections. And pollution prevention for municipal operations. We maintain our municipal facilities. We conduct activities in a manner that minimizes impacts on water quality, and we provide appropriate training to our employees. So the future for the MS4 requirements. Coming in 2018, we have to renew our permit. There are going to be impaired water lists with specific requirements that you have to meet for each watershed. Those include mine drainage metals, pH bacteria, and organics that were never included. There's going to be more municipal responsibility for tributary areas that we didn't have responsibility for before. The future impacts on the municipality is, we will have to design and build BMPs or small-scale treatment systems to retrofit our storm sewers to cleanse runoff. Demands on the municipality and our resources will continue to increase in the future. And then we get into repairs. We are seeing that inlet and pipe collapse and deterioration is accelerating as the infrastructure ages. Once again, like we said earlier, most of this infrastructure is well past its intended lifespan. And this requires more resources from Public Works Department and engineering staff for repairs. We also have upgrades. Upgrades are required to address recurring flooding issues. For example, we had some recurring flooding in the Glenwood Plan. That required a detention pond and piping to be upgraded at a total cost of $325,000. We're going to see that elsewhere in the municipality in the coming years. And there are some pictures. On the left was a before, and on the right is after. And any questions anybody has, we'll be more than happy to answer.
Just for the public, it's just going to cost us a lot of money, so get ready.
And the other thing about that, and Paul, you could speak to this better than I. The Department of Environmental Protection will be ramping up for coming around and doing audits in all the different municipalities in the Pittsburgh area. And Paul, if you want to speak, I believe you were at a meeting concerning that?
Oh, yeah. We just recently had a meeting, and the DEP is coming to a neighborhood near you. They will be here sooner than later.
Just as the public knows in the Pittsburgh area, everybody's probably heard probably about the Allegheny County Consent Order with respect to Alka-Sand, and anywhere approximately $2.5 billion, and that's with a B, to upgrade the sewage in this area. Any 83 municipalities that contribute to the Alka-Sand that are in their watershed. Well, what the MS4 is, is the same thing. They're interrelated. It's the same thing, only it's with stormwater. And the Environmental Protection Agency from the federal government and the Department of Environmental Protection, the state, they are... This is, MS4 has been enacted, I believe it was in 1999, I think, if I'm not mistaken.
2003 it applied to us.
Army?
2003 it applied to us. I think larger cities might have been...
Okay. I think the legislation may have been passed in 99. So it takes a while for these items to get done, whether it's sanitary sewer or storm sewer. But as Paul just said, a DEP auditor will be coming to a municipality near you, and that will be Monroeville. So they're going to be auditing us, and all the different items that Jamie just talked about are going to have to be fixed, you know, beginning sometime in the near future. And we have done some work, but not nearly enough. And we're all in the same boat with other municipalities. It costs money.
Am I correct, Jamie? It has to be completed by 2026, am I correct?
There's no timeline to do any replacement of pipes or anything like that?
Maybe that's the sanitary.
Sanitary.
Alrighty, anything else? Any questions, Council? Seeing none, Sean, any words of wisdom?
No, Mayor, we're just getting ready for the audit that's coming up on theoretically the 16th. That's not in stone, and everything's going well.
Good. Okay, now we'll go over the reports of our council members, and Tom, we'll start off with you.
I don't have anything tonight, Mayor, thank you.
Very good. Steve?
I have nothing for tonight, I'll save for Tuesday.
Very good. Paul?
A couple things. North American Martyrs is having a Designer Purse Bash at the Garden City Fire Hall on Sunday, March 6th, from 1:00 to 4:00. Tickets are $35. That includes lunch, drinks, desserts, wine, and 12 chances to win a designer purse. There will also be a Chinese auction, 50/50 raffle, mystery purse raffle, and extra purse chances will be available for sale during the event. Feature designers are Coach, Michael Kors, Kate Spade, Brahmin, Tori Birch, and Dunian Burke. This benefits North American Martyrs Catholic School. If you need more information, you can call the Purse Bash at 412-373-0889, or 304-9999. Couple things for the library. There is a survey out asking community members about what type of creative programs and classes they want to see offered at the library, which should be coming in your February Water Bill. I would just like everybody to fill it out. You could drop it off or send it to the library. You could also go onto the library's website, which is monroevilllibrary.org. Click the link top of the page that says the program survey. Finally, the Chamber of Commerce is hosting an open house at the library on May 26th from 4:00 to 6:00 to highlight some of the great new services and programs the library's offering. There will be food. Everybody's welcome. And you can contact either the Chamber or the library for more details. That's all I have.
Thank you, sir. Jim?
Yes, sir. A few items going on at the convention center. The Westpac Spring Job Fair is Wednesday, March 9th. The Pittsburgh Golf Show is Friday, March 11th through the 13th. Pittsburgh Arts and Crafts Spring Festival is Friday, the 18th of March through the 20th. Camp Coins and More Promotions is also Friday, March 18th through the 20th. Teacher Job Fair is Wednesday, March 30th. The Western PA Kennel Club Dog Show is Saturday, April 2nd and Sunday, the 3rd. Just Between Friends is Tuesday, April 7th through the 10th. And last but not least, the Showmaster's Gun Show is Saturday, April 9th and April 10th. And Ron, as hard as I looked, I couldn't find anything about the cornhole stuff.
Are you done, sir?
I'm done.
Ron, you're up.
Amazing.
I don't even know what that means anymore.
Amazing he couldn't find it. Only two things for tonight. The first one is the report on the Rivertown pedestrian crossing on Center Road. Thanks to Paul and Engineering, they drew up a letter and a accurate drawing because the county wanted to know or see what exactly our request was to do there, which was, of course, put a crosswalk in and some signs. And that was submitted to the county. They actually picked it up. And from what I understand, Mayor, we should be here maybe tomorrow.
That is correct.
They have it running through their legal department, I guess, just to make sure everything's good. And I have had two calls from residents, actually, and I'm actually kind of surprised. But they asked if we had a ordinance that requires your house number to be displayed. And I told them we did. And he wondered why it wasn't enforced. And I said, with everything going on, there's typically not enough manpower to do that. But I really have a concern for that, both in the side work I do as a volunteer firefighter and experiencing some of the stuff that's happened recently with ambulances trying to find the right house number. Is there any way we can do some enforcement on that, or send out notices? Or maybe even if the building inspectors do one street a week, like every Friday, spend an hour and do one street? See if there's any houses with no addresses posted and...
Part of the inspection process of house sales, that's part of it. Where if somebody's selling their home, you know, that's one of the arguments that they look at to make sure you have your addresses posted. We just recently did one, Chief Cole and I, with Cambridge Square. They repainted their building and painted over their addresses, and you couldn't see the addresses. They rectified that. So, yeah, I'll have the guys, and I'll just, you know, periodically look...
Maybe on a certain day, for an hour, just do one street, just every week. If they did one street and sent out notices, we might get more posted.
Maybe also, Ron, have Tim, maybe we can put another notice in our water bill? That's required?
It's... I don't know how to say it. It's for their good, but I...
Well, it's what...
You know, it's just... When you're out there, you're the one looking for the heart attack victim, and you can't find the house number, it's...
Exactly. It's in their best interest.
So do you think we can still do both?
Sure. Put it on the website, put it on TV-15.
Yes. And then what about still, maybe just give them to the water authority? Maybe put it in the bill?
I know you shouldn't have to say it, but maybe you want to put in contrasting colors? We've come across house numbers in exactly the same colors.
That's how it's written. It has to be contrasting colors.
Okay. Anyway, that's all I have, thank you.
Nick?
Yes, Mayor. Couple events coming up for the Parks and Recreation Department. The annual Easter egg hunt will be Saturday, March 19th at the Community Park West. It begins at 10:00 a.m. for kids 2 to 10 years old. It's always a great event. There's no pre-registration that is necessary. So that's a couple Saturdays from now, the 19th, at 10:00 a.m. and at the community park. And that same day, at 2:30 at Heritage Park, is the annual doggy Easter egg hunt. So you can, you have to pre-register for that. But there are eggs that have little doggy treats in them, and there's a costume contest. Mr. Harvey is going to be judging the costumes this year, I believe. He just volunteered for it. But that's 2:30 on that same day, March 19th. But please pre-register for that if you want to bring your dog at Heritage Park, at the dog park. You can do that through the Recreation Department, and certainly call them if you have any questions about those two programs. Another program through there is, as Jamie mentioned, the annual Jack Sedlack Cleanup Day is Saturday, April 23rd. If you're tired of litter-strewn streets and you want a cleaner community, then volunteer for this day. Call the Recreation Department, and you can join as a group or a family and pick a neighborhood or an area to clean up. That is Saturday, the 23rd of April, 9:00 a.m. to 11:00 a.m. Then there's also a picnic afterwards, rain or shine, with some food and some chances to win raffle prizes. And participants will receive a T-shirt for the first 250 people. So once again, through the Recreation Department, contact them if you want to get registered. And while we're talking about volunteer... And while we're talking about volunteering, the, still through the Recreation Department, we're still working on the trail system that we're joining up with Westmoreland County to do the corridor that runs from Export to Trafford along, one of the junctions is Saunders Station Road at the bottom. They are converting the railroad tracks to a trail system. So we're looking for volunteers for the Minrova Trail Advisory Committee to help out with that project, and then also to work with other projects. We're trying to actually connect other parks down to that corridor throughout the municipality. So if you're interested, please contact the Recreation Department. And that's all I have for this evening.
Linda?
First, I'd like to thank the Engineering Department for the presentation on the MS4. You're going to hear a lot more about it in the future, so it's good to learn as we go, all of us. Secondly, this Saturday at noon is the Bingo at the Senior Center, guaranteed jackpot of five hundred dollars, so that's certainly something to think about. And lastly, I just want to let Minrova know that two of our officers were recognized on the state level for saving lives using the, for reversing the heroin overdoses. And they were recognized at the state level, and in attendance were Representative Joe Markosik, our mayor, and Chief Cole. And their names are Officer DeFaleese and Lieutenant Lukowitz. And I'm just very proud that they're from Minrova and for what they've done. As we know, heroin is a huge epidemic everywhere, and at least now we have something to help combat it. If you can't, you know, get the dealers to get it off the streets, at least we have something to save lives. So I am very proud to say that there are officers, and they were recognized. And that's everything I have.
And you just stole some of my thunder from Doug.
Oh, it's about time I beat you.
But no, Doug and I are going to do a little something for the guys on Tuesday, and we'll get more into that. But other than that, as far as the In God We Trust initiative, you will be hearing more on that from me. I will be meeting with the gentleman that I met in Harrisburg, and I don't know if there's a committee you form here locally. I'm just going to be jumping into that, and if there is, I'll be seeking some volunteers. Again, I'm just getting into it as of Monday, so you'll hear more about that. And with that, is there a motion?
Motion.
Second? All in favor?
Aye.
Good night.